Good evening. It is Monday, November 6.
Recording in progress.
2023, and this is a meeting of the South Borough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda is MBTA Communities update on the workshops. Who's running with this one?
I guess I can. I'm trying to open my file here. So I do have, I'm going to share. I'm going to share my screen. I have the reasoning sheets and then I have the maps. So I'm going to give table, I guess I'll do table one and share that so you guys can read some of the comments they made.
So while we do that, Colleen, I'm going to just give a quick update. So last Wednesday, we had the first mapping session for MBTA Communities and it was a really good turnout. And although we had a snafu of the starting time, we managed through it. There were only one or two relatively disgruntled people, but by the end of the session, I believe everything had worked itself out. There were eight tables. There were probably 50 people there. A well-rounded group. There were maps on each table and then each table had a reasoning sheet. And then the attendees were tasked with putting stickies on the map that indicated certain acreages that are required under the MBTA Communities program. And each table then used those stickies and put where they thought the MBTA Communities overlay district should possibly go. And then they also filled out a reasoning sheet which indicated why they made those selections and had some questions. I mean, and had some answers as to why they picked those locations. I can tell you from while I was there that it ranged from, we don't want to do anything where it was a blank, to working out some potential areas. So I think it was a good exercise. We used a map that the DPW helped Colleen configure from the state's GIS, which showed excluded areas in different colors and a half a mile radius around the train station in yellow. And you can see that on the screen right now. So, Colleen, since you orchestrated, I'll let you go from there. I just wanted to give a little background.
No, thank you, because I'm a little discombobulated. I barely made it home in time, so. Yeah, so this is an example of the map and you can see the bright orange stickers. Can you guys all see those? So I have the maps, one through eight, and the reasoning sheets from the different tables. And Marnie had said that she was willing to work with gathering all this information and somehow analyzing it to kind of see where everybody would like these districts to go. So there's a couple down here. There was a little bit of confusion where people thought that it had to be raw land and we cleared that up. And the 25 acres that need to stay together, you can see there's over here, I think that's not, that's not the Dell property. Yeah, so I had a lot of really good responses from it. They, you know, people thought it was a great idea. People were engaged. I have one table that didn't mark up a map at all and the reasoning was behind it was they just didn't agree with it. So we have that as well. What about Jesse? Jesse did a great job.
Thanks, Colleen. I thought the evening went very well. It was certainly well-attended. I want to say, if I had, off the top of my head, I think there was about 100 people there.
Yeah, on and off, I think you're about right. There was definitely more than 50.
I thought, I thought that the participation was really, really constructive and I would expect that we're going to have a lot of good information on which to, you know, basically devise at least one map. One suggestion that came up that night that I think the board may want to, not necessarily discuss tonight, but at least start thinking about is potentially having more than one map for, at least for the public hearings, if not to actually, you know, have ready for town meeting. And the reason for that is there's such a wide spectrum of opinion on whether or not to proceed, or if we do proceed, how to proceed, you know, to what extent do we quote unquote comply with the state? And to what extent are we going to, you know, take the approach of doing the bare minimum or, you know, do, you know, how much do we want to actually follow the spirit of the state's intent? So very productive stuff and certainly gave me a lot to think about.
Me too. There was things that I hadn't heard before. You know, and there was the three women that did each their own sheet, had all different, different reasonings. Let me pull up. Well, I mean, we can look at this all together at another time, but I just wanted to show you, for instance, what we got out of it, broad data.
So, so just, where do, where do we go from here, I guess is the question. Is that you, Marnie?
Well, we obviously have the second workshop. I think we have to just coordinate the information in some way that can be consolidated and reviewed. So my thinking right now is just basically trying to put a spreadsheet together that looks at the input, the rationale, and then be able to kind of, a lot of this is qualitative and, you know, when I mean qualitative, it means it's, you know, small groups of people, so it's not statistically significant. There is something that I think we should think about as, to your point, Jesse, not for discussion tonight, but I think that because there is such a spectrum of opinion out there and on the land that we would potentially put forward, we should have some maybe quantitative, maybe like a survey that we would put out potentially to be able to, be able to get some sort of statistical significance around those who could participate in the survey to try and drive a decision, because I think it's going to be really challenging considering just the eight tables that we had and the wide variety of opinion that the eight tables and will have, you know, potentially eight, maybe more tables neck this week. And so it's really trying to figure out how to optimize. And I think we, as planning board members, listening to, you know, the people that we represent, I think, need to have a really good perspective to be able to bring forward something to the bylaw. So I think, why don't we start to crunch numbers, basically begin to put this into some sort of spreadsheet? And I told Colleen I would help do that, at least some way that we might be able to look at the data in a way that makes sense.
So are, as far as though the map aspect of it, like, were you going to actually name the streets in the spreadsheet? Is that how that was? Because I was, in my mind, it was going to be like, we would have like a map that had almost like a heat map or a shaded, you know, which were the most popular type of?
Yeah, I think we have to get down to that level of detail.
Can I ask a question too? Sorry, Marnie. So as we think forward to Wednesdays, how do we, if we're going to do statistical analysis, how are we going to track or how are we going to know if the same people come back and put the same proposal forward again? Sorry, go ahead.
So I would consider what these mapping sessions are qualitative. So, you know, it's okay if people come back, to be honest, and then they, they submit. It will give us a landscape of choices. And I think the survey is something that we would then, I think we have to distill the choices and then be able to define what are the ones that we think are probably most feasible and why? And then maybe put out different optionality in that survey. That's where I would hope that we would be able to gain the statistical significance.
I can certainly start that. You know, what I can do is start condensing it onto one map and maybe something will show up as a more often picked location than one, than another.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Yeah, I could definitely start that. Actually, I could probably, I could probably have something like that ready for the next meeting and showing where people were thinking, if you think that would be valuable for the Wednesday meeting I'm talking.
I would say that would bias your audience. I would put a blank map out.
Okay. I have those ready to go.
Oh, I thought you meant for the next planning board meeting.
Oh, I can, I will definitely have it for the planning board meeting.
Yeah, not for the, not for the mapping session. Correct. I agree with Marnie on that one. I have, so I wasn't there and I thank you all for jumping in. And I got great feedback. I heard it was very productive and very, very well-run. Thank you, Colleen. I just had one question. We had talked about doing, like after the mapping, having each table present the, what they, but that didn't happen. Is that something we want to happen on Wednesday or it took too long to do the mapping or?
So I asked a couple of tables and I didn't get a warm reception to that. I think we asked also, Colleen, at the beginning, we might have asked a few tables if they wanted to kind of summarize their thinking publicly and I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see that. But I guarantee, you know, what we were all doing was walking around and speaking with, with people. And I think we all learned things that we'd never heard before and, you know, it was like super amazing. So it's like, I hope that we don't forget this stuff in our head. I really thank you, Colleen, for putting this stuff all together like this. This is a reminder of some of the things that, that we've heard. But I think, I hope that this week is, is just as popular as last week. I did get a couple of questions from some folks that said, you know, is it, is it worth it, you know, are you going to do anything different next week? And but the thing is, if you're put together at a table kind of randomly and, and you know, people, neighbors were meeting neighbors, but also people, you know, developers were meeting others and it was just interesting dynamics. So I encouraged people to come back if they could. And I just guarantee we're going to learn more after this week. But then I agree with Mr. Stein. Then I think we've got to start thinking about several options, because I got that same feeling that we could come and do all this work and present something to town meeting and somebody could come with their own plan that's not researched and, and just whip it out and, you know, it may get approval or something like that. We don't want that to happen.
Well, I don't think that could happen because it's zoning. So you can't, on town meeting floor, something that hasn't had a hearing, you can't just whip out at town meeting.
They, they can't change the?
It has to be within the four corners.
So if they decide they don't want this street, but they want these other streets to have certain zones or something like that, they can, they can or can't make those changes?
Don't think that they can make those changes.
That's good to know.
We may be able to figure out.
Question for town council, because I'm, I would think that an amendment could pass on town meeting floor. That's news to me if we, if it couldn't.
It is a good question.
Yeah, well, so the reason zoning requires hearings is that people know what's coming before town meeting. So if you have a hearing on, like this is the map, or option A and option B, and then something completely different C comes up, I don't think that that can be addressed on town meeting floor without having a hearing.
So what if there were hypothetically like a citizen's petition? And that was brought up, like a map that wasn't something we were putting forward, but was put together, put forward via citizen's petition? Could that be advanced at town meeting?
So with that one?
I don't think without a hearing.
No, you would, yeah. A citizen's petition, they would have to have it in, in time to meet the deadline for the warrant and the planning board would hold public hearings for that. Not necessarily in support of it, but you would, you would be the body that would hold the public hearings.
So one thing for the next meeting, I think one of the reasons the mapping session was so productive was there wasn't a ton, excuse me, a ton of debate during the session on the merits of MBTA communities as a concept. And that was the, the aspect of the, having the tables present that was a little concerning for me. You know, from the perspective of the chair, because you don't want it to devolve into a, a hearing on MBTA communities. You really just want it to be about the mapping.
Right.
Yeah. But there's, people will show up that, as Colleen said, say, no, you know, we're leaving our, we're submitting a blank map because we are, you know, in protest. I think it's great to capture that as feedback, but it's not necessarily productive to have, you know, spoken.
So Wednesday gets run the exact same?
I would recommend it. I think you're chair, right?
Yes, I am.
Just making sure.
Although I heard you did such a good job if you're, if you're now available.
He kept them from getting into debate. Which was good.
Mimi, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So this is to the three of you. I wasn't there either. So again, thank you for all that you did. I also heard positive feedback. If there's one thing for Mimi and I, excuse me, that weren't there, that was a takeaway that each of you had that might be helpful with the second session, if you could share any that you have. Thank you.
One takeaway was just be, it was initiated by the table that I first was introduced to before we actually kicked off the workshop. And that is, and maybe it's changing the rationale sheet just to tweak, Colleen.
Yep.
To add, you know, maybe there's a first thing that says, that gives an open question about, will you participate in this workshopping? And it comes back to the blank map, because I think that table felt there was nothing on that sheet that they could answer that says we're protesting this. We don't believe in this law, this law, which I think they should have a voice. And so to be able to give them that voice. And so we started the session saying, you're invited to have that choice. But the purpose for this is a mapping workshop. So we're going to focus on the mapping and so allow those people to have their say. That would be my one takeaway.
I think that maybe I could have done a better job as per framing it from the beginning that, that way. Fortunately, Marnie, you know, spoke up and, you know, laid that out there. But maybe I, if I could redo it as chair, I might say from the outset, we're really not here to talk about MBTA communities. We're here to say if, you know, make the assumption we're going to be in compliance and map accordingly and really frame it maybe a little better.
Yeah, I mean, you did a nice job framing it. I think you gave the person who was speaking an opportunity to get a few things off their chest and I, you know, I think that was, that was fine. We might encounter some of that at this next meeting, because we've received some emails of some people who are in protest. And so maybe just to think about if, if somebody does try to speak up, you know, how will we politely deliver that message, Jesse, that, you know, this is a mapping exercise? And, you know, I think the other thing is, I, there might be still some confusion that the planning board isn't trying to meet the obligation. Not that we've shown that in any way, but because we continue to get letters saying, you know, let's fight this from, from town officials, I think that maybe at some point, probably more toward the hearing, not, not on Wednesday, but that we should make it really clear that, you know, we're doing everything we can to meet the letter of the law. We, this is our obligation as an elected planning board. And I, I don't know how, you know, that relates to Wednesday, I suppose. But I'm a little bit disturbed that we, we continue to get letters from town officials that give us suggestions on how to push back. I can understand it completely from a member of, you know, the mapping exercise. But from a town official, I think we should make it clear that that's not our intent.
Well, on the flip side, just playing, you know, the other side of that for a second. Theoretically, any of us could, during the course of the public hearings, come out and say, this is not the way I envisioned this, or I've changed my mind, or any, you know, we could say this map, the direction we're going in from the mapping isn't going to work for me. So really, actually, any of us could take the position at any time that we no longer wish to be in compliance and we want to roll the dice. So I, I mean, I, personally, I don't feel that way right this second, but I can see why people in the public are viewing this as something the planning board is, you know, going forward with and therefore we may be, I don't know, susceptible to hearing, you know, a point of complete opposition.
I hear you. Just, just to say that I, I mean, we can vote however we want to on town meeting floor. But, you know, it's, I think it's our position that we are obligated to follow the laws.
I, I think that we can go in two tracks at the same time and keep an eye on what's going on with other towns and what's going on with any different lawsuits. And right now I feel as if we don't have a choice, that we can either try and comply or we'll get something forced upon us, which I think is not a good situation. So I, I think that we can do two things at once and try and do the best for what the citizens of this town want.
Put the best plan forward and hope for a good town meeting vote. That's really what you can do.
Can I just add, in the interim, when town officials are speaking, maybe ask them if, what capacity they're speaking in? Is there a differentiation there? In other words, if a select member, select board member attends, are they there as a resident or as a select board member? It might make a difference, because individuals can speak for individuals for themselves, but they can't represent their boards unless the board has a consensus. So if they're there, it might not mean their board feels that way.
Yeah, I think that there were two, off the top of my head, I'm recalling two select board members being present, but they didn't speak or deliberate. They didn't have a quorum.
Right.
So.
Yeah. But sometimes the perception is if they're.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that they had any intention of speaking.
I don't think so. If you're done with that discussion, I just want to highlight a couple of points of things that came in related to MBTA communities. So we reached out to the, I reached out to Matthew Probst, the chair of the MTC, to see if there was still time. And so if we have some questions that we want to bring forth for that survey, now's the opportunity. Colleen and I were talking today and one of the questions we thought should be, do you want to see mixed use as a component? Something related to the mixed use component in the overlay district. There hasn't been a lot of talk about what that would encompass, so I'm not sure how to frame it. And then if so, where do you want it?
Because this narrative has come up a couple of times. What is the, where is this coming from? This whole like narrative of wanting to encourage mixed use or require even, I can understand requiring or allowing, or rather allowing or, or maybe encouraging. But why would we want to like require mixed use properties?
Well, I think that the reason it's brought up is because the new guidelines in August enabled municipalities to require mixed use. Previous to that, they could not. Could be allowed, but it couldn't be a requirement.
Okay.
And as for requiring, perhaps in some areas like maybe Route 9, where we have very little business zone property that you wouldn't want to completely turn it into residential and have some capacity for commercial in your residential buildings.
Plus, depending on how isolated the location is, some mixed use is advantageous for the people who live there. In other words, if you don't have sidewalks as rampant as you'd like to get to certain places, certain mixed use components would lend itself to advantage. Like if you had a small convenience store, we all enjoy that. And when we have a convenience store down the street to buy milk or whatever, those kinds of things, instead of having to get in your car and drive, it might be right there.
Right, but what, what if we end up having a developer who, who has a mixed use property with a vacant commercial unit when they would have preferred to have put in residential? Like I think it's okay to let them do mixed use if they think it's going to be advantageous economically, but.
And.
I'm still not getting the whole requiring thing.
Yeah, because the summary here that I had read from MAPC was that communities can allow some mandatory mixed use areas. So there could be visioning discussions about where they would like to see mixed use. This is useful with discussions around a town center and shaping what they want their future to look like. So if the overlay was maybe in the downtown district and overlay on top of that district or something like, no, I'm not saying that that's, that's not, you know, a space that somebody says, but I'm saying, you know, there was, the whole idea for that was because there, there wanted to be some mixed use down there, so.
Yeah, amenities really, you know, things that were, are incidental to residential uses.
Right. But to Jesse's point, it often doesn't work. It's, yeah.
Oh, the distinction of a requirement versus?
Allow.
Allow, yeah.
Which is why we came up with the question, because nobody's really brought it up and we, we haven't asked, I don't believe, so. Good question to ask.
Yeah, so that was one of the questions. I got information that from Marguerite, she dropped off an article about Grafton had just passed MBTA overlay districts themselves. And I think they came through with five different locations as well and they had named and such. So it might be a good source to look, because it, it did pass at their recent town meeting. And then, Colleen, you can probably elaborate on this, but Mass Housing Partnership threw an additional grant, extended Bowler Engineering's technical assistance for South Borough's MBTA communities. So Colleen and I had a Zoom meeting with a manager from MHP and two of the Bowler Engineering representatives. And we discussed a scope moving forward at this stage. And there were three components that we wanted to make sure we had them meet for this next phase. And one was to, once options are selected by the planning board and the town, with town's feedback, that they would prepare the mapping to show those areas. Number two, that they would run a test compliance model through the system on their own with us before it goes to the state to make sure that we'd be in compliance, to see, you know, if there's any issues with it. And then number three would be to advance the bylaw language for the overlay districts. And they, I believe they assured us that those tasks were in their capabilities to do. So those are the three main things we wanted to make sure.
Can I just ask a question or maybe inclusion, maybe not for tonight? I don't want to spend much more time on this. But in something like an open land, are we able, from a technical bylaw perspective, able to, let's just say there was 40 acres somewhere and it was designated MBTA community? In this law, are we able to designate a phasing?
No. We did ask that exact question, thinking of the Dell property, and we were told, no, you cannot phase it.
And I believe, Colleen, you indicated also that you had. And I believe, Colleen, you indicated also that you had gotten feedback that you cannot just select one lot.
Yeah, it has to be a district. It can't be a five acre lot, right?
Okay. Which I, that was counterintuitive to me, so I, you know, if you have a 40 acre parcel, that would be perfect for that overlay. I'm not, I don't know if they would be flexible in, you know, waiving some of those, because they've been flexible in other things as far as boundaries and inside the half mile radius and such, so. It's up to who's approving the compliance model.
So I am planning to attend the Wednesday, 12 to 1:30 MBTA community meeting. And I don't know if there is going to be question and answer, but I'm probably going to make a comment that I, I think it would only be fair for the towns to be able to provide very clear rules around how to develop the product, the property, if it is a large property that's un, completely unpurposed right now. Because I think that would cripple not only Southborough, but every other town that, if they had that and didn't have the right to be able to phase it. I think that's, that's not really smart. But I could go on.
Yeah, and maybe my knowledge is limited and experienced, but I felt like if you had a large lot, why couldn't you overlay that? Why would you have to have multiple lots?
I think it has to do, honestly, with ownership and opportunity. Because spot zoning, one parcel, even if it's very, very large, still only is one opportunity for.
There's a bottleneck, right?
Yeah. It's, it's just a spot zoning sort of concept.
Okay. So, and then just quickly, we recently had a quick meeting, Mimi and I, and Debbie, I think you were there too, with MAP, with MWRC, which is a subdivision of MAPC, because they have a new coordinator there, municipal coordinator, and she wanted to get to know Southborough and some of the things going on here. So one of the things we did talk about was MBTA very briefly. But then afterwards, in an email, she mentioned how, she gave us an example of another town, an excluded area map. And so I asked them if they had one for Southborough, and they said, no, but we can make one. So like, within the next day, they gave us this exclusion for free, which is, you know, we are members of their planning district there. So it was a really nice, because it's all one color and all. And we made Bowler and Mass Housing aware that in case they needed to use some of that, they could tap in instead of recreating the wheel if they shared the shape files and such. So I don't know how that works inter-agency, but really, the planning agencies are all, you know, they're all planning agencies. So that, I think they would maybe benefit from that. But that's where those maps come from, the new maps. And I think, Colleen, you're anticipating on using those maps for Wednesday, right?
And we used them last Wednesday, too.
Yeah.
They were the prettier ones.
Which ones?
They weren't my color crayon ones.
Yeah. Well, that was good for the first meeting, because you could see what types of different properties there were. It wasn't just all gray. You could see this is municipal, and this is south, or whatever. There was some division there, flood zone, et cetera. So those are beneficial. So I didn't know if you wanted to have any other questions we could propose to the MTC, or if you still want to do that, to put, include in their survey. I didn't want to cut you off with that.
I promised to do that. I didn't, so I will work on those and then submit them. I think that it would be really helpful for us to put a quick little paragraph about the MBTA Community Act in form, then ask open-ended questions. Not open-ended, they want the closed-ended probe. So maybe like a, are you aware that Southborough is one of the 177 communities that is required to comply with this law or risk losing grants and blah, blah, blah? Yes or no? So I think that would be a good benchmark. And then I think we could add a couple other questions specific to what we would need to know, just from a pure awareness perspective. Yeah. Like various, well, we could add a mixed use question. I think we, we could define it. You have to define what it is, so people know what that means, and then ask, you know, you know, the question that you asked. But I think if we do it in a succession of questions, I think we can kind of develop awareness, ask questions, provide more information, ask questions, and then close out in the five questions that were granted.
And Marnie, just so that you're aware, I did talk with Matt, and he said, said that he can really frame a question anyway, multiple answer.
Oh, great.
Open-ended, he doesn't care for, but we could have choices they could pick from.
Perfect.
So he was really wide open.
Great. Thank you, Colleen. Thanks for your patience with me.
Thank you, Marnie.
Thank you for your help.
Anything else on this one? And just so you know, that clock is wrong.
Yeah.
They didn't fall back. So the next item on the agenda is the 2024 meeting schedule.
Let's get it up here.
Has everyone had a chance to go through it? Any comments or changes or? Lisa?
Thank you. So I just have one conflict, June 10th. That's the week that I go away during the summer. But obviously, the planning boards could still meet, but I will be away that week. I don't have a mouse, so pardon my delays.
We could go to June 17th, right, Colleen?
Let's see.
If you look on the second page of your handout, it's in the packet, too, I think.
Oh, good, the whole calendar.
There's a calendar there. And the green circles are the proposed meetings. And then we try to avoid school vacations, holidays.
Super Bowl.
Significant events.
Yes, we only, there's only one meeting in June. Would any, would anyone have an issue with the 17th? That works? Okay.
So do you, you, we don't usually, you usually don't vote on this, right? Do you vote to accept the meeting calendar in the past?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think it's just a consensus, yeah. Does anyone, anyone else have anything offset with everything else?
Okay.
All right, with that one change, sounds good.
Good job, Colleen.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 21 Highland Street Future Use Committee update. And I had put this on the agenda because I attended the last select board meeting where they had voted to, after they voted to exclude the planning board from the Future Use Committee, they voted to include the planning board in the Future Use Committee. But then I received a call last week from the select board chair saying that they have a possible offer on that building. And the prospective buyer is willing to keep it the way that the town had wanted, hopefully preserve the building and the sledding hill and the playground. So he thought that it was perhaps not the greatest time to set up a committee if, if this is in the works. So this is now on hold. Any comment or question on that?
I just, I don't want to forget that we have attendees as well. So we have four attendees, and I haven't seen any hands raised at this time. Yes, two in person.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, St. Mark's School Parking Lot at St. Mark's Street Major Site Plan.
St. Mark's is currently with Conservation Commission, addressing some drainage review comments from the peer review. And they may have to revise, rework some of their plans. So they asked to be continued tonight without testimony to the next meeting, anticipating they'll be submitting revised plans this week sometime. So we have an extension request that was already requested and approved, voted on and filed with the town clerk. That brings us through December 1st. So we have another meeting before we need another extension. So this would be continued to the November 27th meeting. I'm good, thank you.
Do we need to extend the decision due date, too, or?
No, that's part of that extension request. And also, I want to point out that we did receive follow-up review comments from Fussin O'Neil. But when I looked through them and also got a copy of the ones that went to Conservation is when we recognized it, and then that, we asked them, you know, are you ready? And they said, no, we'd, we'd like to not come in tonight until we're ready. I did follow up an email with Town Administrator Mark Purple, so he's aware, because I know he's been on occasion asking what the status of that project is. So we sent him a quick email, letting him know that they were revising their plans.
Okay. So I just need to make the motion that we continue the public hearing for St. Mark's School Parking Lot at St. Mark's Street Major Site Plan to November 27th, 2023, at seven, oh, seven o'clock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rasio, yes.
Next item, discussion, public shade tree policy update. So at our last meeting, we had discussed, the select board had proposed some changes to the tree policy. Lisa and I met with Sam and Al and renegotiated those changes. And then they were brought to the October 24th Select Board Meeting, and they further amended the policy and then voted to accept it. And the changes were, under 5A, we had that unless a tree poses an imminent hazard, it shall not be cut, trimmed, or removed, you know, only in the late fall. And they changed that to trimming, so they can cut and remove trees anytime. The next change was 6B, under tree replacement, and it was public shade trees so removed that either do not serve a public purpose or removed without complying with the public hearing process. They remove the, do not serve a public purpose. So it's just without complying with the public hearing process. So trees that don't serve a public purpose, say if someone's putting in a house and wants a curb cut, and there's a 300-year-old oak tree, they can take it down and replace it with a three-inch caliper tree. Where we tried to mitigate that with the does not serve a public purpose. So maybe that's something we can revisit, but that was what was voted on. And then the last thing was, it had been all replacement trees shall be straight native species. It's now shall be a species recommended in the town's June 30, 2019 Southborough Street Tree Guidelines with a preference for native species. All replacement trees shall be species recommended in the town's June 13, 2019 Southborough Street Tree Guidelines with a preference for native species and deemed advisable by the tree warden designated.
So that's 6C, right, 6C?
Yeah. Yes. So any comments or questions?
If I may. I certainly have a concern with 6B, and for the example specifically that you just used. I know that they've approved it, but I think it would be, it would benefit the select board to know how strongly planning board feels about having that changed and that taken out. I mean, at the end of the day, we all worked very hard to try to come up with a policy that we could all live with. To me, this is a big deal. And it wouldn't serve the public in any way if planning board had to come up with a policy that at least on scenic roads, we were offering a level of protection that they're not. So my suggestion would be to write them a letter, letting them know how strongly we feel about that, and see if they would amend it sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Houlihan?
Thank you. So I would definitely support that. I think that makes a lot of sense, seeing that what you just described was not a hypothetical. So that's a little concerning. And I just want to say thank you again, Mimi and Lisa, for being the advocates with Select Board to kind of make the compromises and collaborate with them to get as close as possible. Obviously, they, they made some adjustments here, and that's good. But I would agree that I think removing that phrase, particularly where this particular area talks about scenic roads. And again, your point is, and it shouldn't just be scenic roads that are protected. We're a tree city. We have, you know, voted to comply with Mass General Law, which is protecting public shade trees.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we're all in agreement to write a letter? Okay. I'll work on that and send it to you for edits.
Okay. Unless I get to it first, then I'll send it to you for edits.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is MPIC goals review prioritize. Is this you, Mr. Maria?
Yeah, I can, I can start us off. So this is sort of an ongoing thread where the Master Plan Implementation Committee had wanted to reach out to the planning board to see if they had any priorities that they wanted to put forward, meeting up with the Select Board in a joint meeting before the budget season begins. And I have to just apologize to the board. I think last meeting, I was kind of tired and maybe didn't describe it as really very well. And I know Mr. Stivers came in, and he also described, I think, what the, the intent was. But I will say that it fostered some really nice communication. I heard some very interesting things from this board. And it did bring it back to MPIC. So I wanted to just update you to let you know that we're doing a couple of things. We're looking at the information that's, well, we will be looking at the information that is being gathered right now for the final report for the planning board. So the planning board has recommended that we provide the report instead of quarterly, but twice yearly. So we're set to deliver a report to you in December. And a couple of the members have taken the task of going back and, and looking to see, like, how can we improve the type of report that we're giving to planning board? And also, taking to heart, you know, the questionnaire that has been drafted. We're not intending to make any changes to it, but there is a non-leading question that will, you know, as we reach out to our boards and committees, we'll make sure that we kind of hit that question. And that question has to do with, you know, is there any reason, any difficulty or challenges that you're having that you might be facing right now, that you won't be able to meet your goals, or you find that it's challenging, and you, you know, made that kind of thing? And I think it says, for example, And I think it says, for example, maybe need support from another board, or funding, I think is what it says. So the MPIC decided to keep the questionnaire as we have it right now. And let's take a look at the data and the information that we get back. I personally want to just say, I believe that the intent of meeting jointly was in good faith. I do think, and others have suggested also, it's maybe a little bit too late, because maybe their budget season has kicked off and that sort of thing. But it would be interesting to gather some thoughts tonight from this board as to, you know, how to move forward. I want to propose that, you know, before the goal-setting meeting that the Select Board have each year, that we remind them that there are already goals that the master plan has laid out and suggest that, you know, more than 90% of their goals should be ones that are already in the master plan. So, you know, just in ideas like that, and I'd like to hear from others as well. So at this point, I'd like to know, you know, is it useful to meet with the Select Board? I'm kind of equivocal. I don't know how well it would be taken. But I think that we would have a lot more input if we could let Select Board know that we're very interested to have them choose goals that the town has already put forward in the master plan in July.
Any comment, question?
So, understanding it's only practical and pragmatic to look at the budgeting and the timing of implementation relative to what's feasible in the, you know, immediate fiscal year budget discussions. That, to me, is a reasonable component of the Implementation Committee. But I just would caution that the committee look at beyond that scope to the entirety of the master plan and make sure that there is at least a thought of how, in the future or, you know, in a non-budget scope, analysis, what can be done and when. So I think, Marnie, and maybe if you want to take it from here, because you were the one that actually, I thought, put it very well at our last meeting and when this came up, that it makes sense to do thing, you know, look at the entire master plan and say, well, this might not happen this fiscal year, but this will happen X time and so forth.
Yeah, so it's actually just leveraging something that I use with companies, right, in strategic planning processes. So it's a framework. And essentially, I think that's what we talked about, is the vision. And what the master plan is, is the 10-year vision, right? It's 10-year vision. So there's a vision, and then there's goals. Goals are usually, you know, one to three years in time, and then being able to kind of establish, and Deb, you might be more familiar with this than many of the others, is like strategic imperative. So what does the town need to focus on to be able to achieve that goal for the year? So I think if we can maybe, you know, I'm happy to provide that framework and then have you guys think about it, but I think it's being able to take a broad sweep of the entire thing. It's pretty robust, right? But being able to, and you've already done it in a way that you've said, short-term, longer-term, but maybe being able to frame it out just visually, so you could see how that actually stacks up. Because that might just be the first step, to be able to see the visual, how this folds out in just a pictorial way, and then be able to kind of take that first, maybe that first year or short-term, however that's defined. If it's, short-term is still defined as three years. The Select Board has to focus on annual goals, right? So I think, can you take the three-year and define those into annual goals that could align with the Select Board? And propose that, looking at these, this is how you might be able to line up Select Board goals, which they're going to definitely, I don't know if 90% can be in master plan, because I think there's other things that happen with Select Board that they need to manage. But maybe 75% could incorporate the master plan. And then you have that 25% of goals that are definitely, you know, event-driven, that are more short-term oriented, that they need to manage. And so that's how I might describe it, and I could certainly spend time sharing that framework with you, if you think it would help.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. On our committee, Judith Watson is really sort of the visual pro, and she's created all kinds of, you know, these sorts of tables and has overlaid Select Board 2024 goals now on master plan goals and things like that. And if there's a way, so what, I understand what you're saying is, this could be a way that we could take something into the future to the Select Board to say, okay, we're not, so Master Plan Implementation Committee doesn't make any priorities, but basically acknowledging that there's short-term goals and they're coming up. We're coming up on two, three years. And that would be available to them, so they could readily see them. And we would propose that maybe they could prioritize these short-term goals, so they could be met. Yeah, I appreciate that. And maybe we can loop in Judith, if I can recruit her, she's always willing.
That framework would also incorporate, like, thinking about the budget associated with those goals, right? So like, you, I think the first stab is to be able to say, here's what it's, here's what it looks like, but then you'd have to go back to all these other groups that have their plans, where it's, you almost call it a tactical plan. And you have to say, like, what kind of budget? What are you going to do? What's it going to cost? What are you going to do? And how long is it going to take? And so then you kind of build the framework, you gain agreement, and then you can roll it down to the committees to kind of build that back up for the proper budgeting season. If we start that process now, it would line up for next year's process, which would be the 25, 26 calendar year.
Lisa?
So I had thought of something, but actually, Marnie, you have taken it 10 steps further than I did. So I'm just going to remain silent and say, thank you.
So that's our next step before any joint meeting with the, okay. Any comments or questions in the audience? Yes, young man?
Tim Lit was in the road. I get younger every year. Just by two cents is that long-term or not short-term doesn't mean do nothing now. It means you need to have some kind of phased plan that says, how are you going to get there? And I'm afraid that people looking at the master plan and looking at, you know, this year's budget, say, well, okay, it's long-term, later. So just think about, for the things that aren't in the current budget, what would the phasing be to get there by the long term? Because otherwise, you're going to arrive at the long term and not have done anything.
Mr. Lit, before you sit down, could you identify yourself for our minute taker?
I did.
Oh, you did? All right. Sorry. Sure.
And it's an excellent suggestion, and that framework does take in the longer term. So I think if done well and executed, and I'm happy to have a conversation with Judith about it, yeah, then I think that you could potentially accomplish that. You just need willing participants.
And Mimi, can I just thank Deb for all of the time and energy and hard work she's put into spearheading this and being chair, and it's appreciated.
Yes, thank you very much. I think this is the first time after the master plan has been completed that it's been discussed, other than, oh, we need to do another master plan. So thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, 120-250 Turnpike Road, mass housing eligibility letters. And we also have a comprehensive permit application that came in on 120.
So it was pretty short-term this afternoon, but ZBA admin Lara Davis dropped these off today. And if, we have, we keep a record copy of the full-size plans in our office, and then Mimi has one as well, if anybody wants to see the full-size plans. The one thing that is missing in this binder is the environmental report, which is pending, similar to the Park Central binder that we got. We'll be getting an email probably tomorrow morning or tomorrow sometime with a link to the webpage that Lara is creating for 120 Turnpike Comprehensive Permit. They will also be, let me just grab my cheat sheet here. So it's my understanding that the public hearing for 120 Turnpike Comprehensive Permit will be opening on December 13th. And also, the modification to the special permit that was issued in 2005 for a building over 50,000 square feet and for two buildings, more than one building on a lot. So they had a special permit in 2005. So they'll be requesting, they'll be doing that public hearing as well, that modification. Let's see what else we have here. Soon as the legal ad comes in, I'll forward it to the Planning Board members. And as soon as the link comes in to the ZBA project page for that, I'll forward that as well. And we do have a copy of the 2005 special permit. It's in the Dropbox, but if anybody wants it, let me know. I think that Lara will have it up on the website as well. She puts the history there.
You also?
I am. I'll just check in here.
One concern that jumped immediately out to me is that there's no subdivision included in this application. And if you remember, there's been a lot of conversation, because there are two office buildings on this lot, so you can't, in a 40B, you can have ancillary, non-residential development, but the residential needs to be primary. So if they kept this as one lot with two office buildings, the residential would not be primary, so that would be in violation of the statute. They had discussed A&R-ing this eight-acre parcel off, but they have no frontage in, state law requires 20 feet of frontage, so ZBA can't waive state law, they can only waive local regs. So according to our town council, it required a subdivision, and I don't see a subdivision. And in a subdivision, the local regulations could be waived for that parcel, which is in the 40B locus, but the other parcel would have to comply with local regs, which would include open space. And I don't see a subdivision in here, which is concerning to me. And they, this afternoon, I guess, was it this afternoon, Lara dropped off their modification to their special permit, which, in the cover letter, it was difficult to follow what they were proposing. It sounded like they were going to leave it as one lot, although the plan shows a new lot line, but I don't know how they get that new lot.
At first glance today, when we looked at it, it appears they're breaking off the triangular portion in the back as an A&R lot, because on the plans, it says, proposed or new lot or proposed lot. You'll see a proposed access easement coming up the side of 118-120 Turnpike, which is the driveway entrance to that existing lot of property for the two office buildings. And then when it crosses over into that triangle in the back for the residential building, it kind of, the roadway turns and follows the zone line, also, AKA, the proposed new property line there. So it's confusing on what's happening there, because is the driveway access in the 40B locus or not? Can you do that? I don't know. There's no subdivision. So I guess we'll see. I, in speaking to Lara today, she is following, submitting everything to town council that she gets in, so that he has everything to review. So he should be following along with them.
Any other comments or questions?
So, I mean, is this just an academic discussion at this point for this board and the planning department? Because this is not in front of us, there's no submission to us that I'm aware of. Is there an action that we should be taking?
Well, I think that on, as in all the 40Bs, we should take an active role in advising the zoning board or giving them our opinion, at least.
And also to mention that at some point, they need to come back to Planning Board for modification to site plan for 118-120 Turnpike's approved site plan.
Okay. So we're just sort of keeping notes, so to speak, on some of these concerns?
Staying aware, yeah.
Right.
Until it comes under our jurisdiction.
Well, I would hope before the December 13th, and we meet again before that, that we would have some type of comment letter to send to the ZBA for their open.
That's what I was wondering, right?
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Maria?
We had a similar concern over subdivision on Park Central. Did, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting. Did we write a letter? Did we agree to write? We wrote the letter. And did it get received and acknowledged?
It did.
Acknowledged? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
So, Mimi, just to press this question, is, the intent is to write a letter with their concerns and comments, draft, work on a draft on the 27th when we meet? Or?
Yeah, to come to the meeting on the 27th with
Comments.
Comments or concerns, so we can get a letter to the ZBA before they open their meeting.
Thank you.
And I would just like to point out, as I have previously, that there was a comprehensive permit that was revoked in Southborough, because the town approved a comprehensive permit that did not follow the statute. So I think we should be very careful and make sure that we're following the law. In 250, there hasn't been an application filed yet, but I think that's coming.
Yeah, I, so I spoke with Lara at ZBA today as well, and they are going to be submitting a, well, they're at the Conservation right now for a contractor building on the property of the storage facility that went through major site plan about a year ago, a year and a half ago. So they're going to be proposing maybe a 10 or 11-unit contractor base, contractor yard units, which is a different use from the inside storage facility. And then also, two buildings, two uses and two buildings on one lot. So it's my understanding that once they're out of Conservation, they're going to go to the ZBA for those special permits. And I think they'll be doing those, yeah, that's one special permit. And then lastly, they'll come to the Planning Board with their proposed contractor yard building for site plan modification, or maybe new site plan. So they're coming back before the Planning Board at some point, if they move So they're coming back before the planning board at some point, if they move forward with that contractor's yard building.
But that's separate from the 40B?
It is separate, yeah.
Anything else? Any questions? Anyone in the audience that has questions or comments or on Zoom?
Or attendees and no hands raised.
Okay.
Nope, that's it. I think so.
So moving on. The next item on the agenda, residents at Park Central. So in answer to your question, Debbie, yes, we did send a letter. And it was referred to at the opening hearing for Park Central. And I had asked on behalf of the planning board that we get responses to the questions that we asked. And we had also asked for a site walk. And the chair of the zoning board of appeals asked the proponent to set up a site walk. I haven't heard anything. And I know Karina's been working on helping them find a consultant for peer review.
Sorry, yeah, we riddled it down to a couple of consultants who were interested in proposing, who are in the process of doing that now. So I helped them. We vetted some people, got some interest, and then I drafted a quick little RFP for them, got it out. So Lara and Davis and David Williams should be in good shape to be getting the proposals that were due this Thursday on the 9th. And I told them that if he needed help, just looking at him to see what made sense, I'd be happy to help them with that too. But it's kind of in their lap now. And they really appreciate the help of the planning board, you know, paying attention and giving comment letters. I think that's very helpful to them, so that they're aware of the history of some of it and some things that we pick up under site plan that they may not always be privy to, so. They're very appreciative.
So when's the next Park Central hearing?
Is November 29th is the next Park Central. Let me just make sure.
And that's on the covenant and traffic, is that what?
Yes. Oh, I don't have it on that. I got it in here. So it was continued to the, I think the 29th is a Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, yeah. And its focus will be on the covenant, question of the covenant, and what that means for the application, and then the traffic.
So Mass DOT had not given them egress onto Route 9 before with the prior 40A combination thing with the, so I'm wondering, this is going to be substantially fewer units than that plan. So if I'm not mistaken, because there's no 40A component now.
I think there are about 200 units proposed for the 40B component. So you're right, the 40A had additional, yeah, building. So yeah, you're right.
So has Mass DOT changed their position as far as egress onto Route 9?
I don't know that. I think that this is a new project, so it would be my guess that I would have to go in front of them again for new review for access. If they're proposing any access onto Route 9, they have to go to Mass DOT.
Right. I mean, it's still a tight squeeze right before the 495 on-ramp, so.
Yeah, yeah. Anything that impacts Route 9, I think that they would be involved in reviewing, whether it's, you know, connecting to utilities or infrastructure, or a driveway opening, or a roadway opening onto it. And I think in this case, they're actually proposing a new roadway with two extensions, right? You have a main subdivision road going in, and then there's, I don't know if that was in the old plan or not, but there's a long road going in, and then two roads that extend to flag as part of that design. So, and I think we've posed several times, you know, what is in the 40B locus and what isn't. And town council has said a couple of times already to me that, you know, if it's not in the 40B locus, they're not entitled to the exemptions of 40B. And that should play itself out while they're impermitting with the zoning board. And I think that the planning board had indicated comments in their comment letter about Park Central to them. So they can have that as a reference as well. But it's kind of in their court.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one, Mimi, are you planning on posting an agenda, just in case there's a quorum of the planning board, whether it be via Zoom or in person?
I hope we're allowed to go in person this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would encourage if members are available to attend.
Okay.
So for 11/29?
Yeah.
And I, there may be others with a better memory than mine, but on the Mass DOT question, I thought when that office building was approved, Mass DOT said, that's it. And I don't, so is traffic allowed to, additional traffic allowed to enter Park Central through there, just not exit? Okay.
There was also concern expressed by Cumberland Farms for egress too. So they did not actually want additional, so they were also on the Mass DOT. So Mass DOT had stated that they weren't going to allow egress. Whether that changes, they still have to go back and have the conversation, because at least what the history had said was, select board had said, we're not really going to do anything unless you can get DOT to agree to egress.
I just want to clarify too, that I think we already got the link to the 1/20 Turnpike Comprehensive Permit application previously from the planning board. I was saying that we got that today, but we got that on last week already.
We got the special permit application today.
Yes, the special permit application today and the binders for the comprehensive permit. So a lot going on, two things there, so.
So do you think we should notify the ZBA that we have not been notified of a site walk, or wait until the next hearing?
Sorry. For Park Central, there was that one thing that you went to, I think, where you were allowed to go to the border.
I didn't.
I didn't go to the Park Central one.
I didn't, I didn't go to the Park Central one.
Okay. Somebody from this committee did.
Well, yes.
You, Lisa? Well, you all went, okay.
So.
And you were allowed to go up to like the line, but not?
Not on the site.
We stayed on the concrete or the road.
It was a parking lot stand, not a site walk.
So has the ZBA done something since then?
So in our letter, we requested a site walk because we weren't allowed on the site. And the ZBA chair requested from the proponent, and the proponent agreed to set up a site walk, because the planning board had requested one. We haven't heard anything.
Go to it too, right?
Sure.
Or anybody, whoever.
Yeah.
So it just hasn't happened?
It just hasn't happened. I don't know if we should make them aware, or just bring that to the next hearing is the question I'm posing to the board.
I would agree with you. It makes sense to remind in writing, whatever, via email or something, that we're very much eager to do that.
Yeah, I'm thinking an informal, like an email, like, because I think we have a pretty good relationship right now with the chair and Laura Davis, so I think that would be a nice way to just poke.
All right, very good.
And the applicant had agreed, right?
Yes.
And it's both sides?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Ooh, we need to start talking slower. Next item, planners' report.
Zoning map is on my desk and being reviewed. It's no longer on the side. It's queued up now, so it's in there happening. Shouldn't be too long. The new company that we use for our GIS mapping is the same company that's updated the zoning map for us, and they're very quick to respond. So once I send them information and markups, they usually respond very quickly. So, you know, it's good. We launched, or the town launched the new GIS mapping under their purview, CAI Technologies. So I think it's up for the public now. If you go to the town website, GIS mapping, a little bit different look, but it has some additional features. We had on here the topic of unauthorized scenic road tree removals. There was some comments about that, that I think you wanted to discuss with the members, some generically.
Yes, so there was a tree on a scenic road that was removed without a hearing. And the tree warden, designee, select board chair, and town administrator were made aware of that. The tree warden, designee verified that it in fact was in violation of Mass general law in our tree policy. The last I heard was that the tree warden, designee, or the DPW superintendent was going to get in touch with the homeowner. I haven't heard anything since. What I was going to request, it seems like there is a consolidated hearing coming up at some point to make sure that this gets on as part of the agenda, because we're going on 60 days now since that happened. Well, not quite, 45. But, yeah, so just so it doesn't get lost.
Speaking of consolidated hearings, can I just ask, Karina, have we heard back if the select board is available to come on our meeting on the 27th for the tree hearings?
No, so we have received an application. It's not complete yet, so the work, the DPW is working on completing it. I think there's a list of about 32 or 33 trees in a spreadsheet from residents' requests. It's the DPW November 2023 tree removal list. The majority, almost all of them are on scenic roads. I think there's one or two that, or one that isn't. So I queried a couple of things. I wasn't sure which date we were leaning towards. If you want me to press for the Monday, the planning board meeting on the 27th, and have the 28th there meeting as a backup, or do you just want me to ask if they can attend the 27th?
My preference would be, planning board has always gone to the select board meetings, and I think in good spirit, there's no reason that select board couldn't be invited to come here for that hearing.
Okay. If the planning board agrees, I'll push for the 27th. And that's all depending on if we get the application complete, and then the tree warden designee runs that in the newspaper and posts the tree. So what I'm waiting for is the complete spreadsheet based upon the new public shade tree removal policy, which included a tree ID number and also a tree assessment form. So I'll follow up with you tomorrow about that form, because the one I have is the one we had a couple of months, you know, like last year, and it references another state. So I wanted to make sure that they have the form that they're supposed to have from Massachusetts, based on the new shade tree policy. Okay, so we'll target the 27th with, ask the select board. And then the second part of this is, you know, typically we require at least seven hard copies in color. When we have, you know, a regular application with maybe one or two trees, and they have a plan, and they show that it's in the driveway that they're proposing, and then we have hard copies for the planning board. With the DPW, in this case, when they compile maybe twice a year their big packet, it includes a lot of information and color photos and such. So I'm extending the question from the DPW, if there's any board members who are happy with just the PDF, and then we can reduce the number of copies they have to submit in color. So Jesse, you're happy with PDF? Are you as well? Okay, got you up there. Marnie, you already said. Lisa, you're good with PDF? All right, and Debbie, PDF. So we will require one hard copy for the file record. Actually, I'm going to say two, because one gets filed with the town clerk. So out of the seven, we don't need five. One for planning board and one for town clerk filing the public hearing. Okay, excellent. They'll be happy to hear that, much less paper.
So has Chris already evaluated all these trees?
No, I think that it was last week and this week. So the tree policy says that the planning board's supposed to be notified when the arborist intends to go out there, so that the planning board members have an option to go out there and view them with them. So when the, this is all a little fast and new again with everything, with some things changing. So we got the application, and it was missing things based on the shade tree. I met with Bill Kundif on Friday morning to review the shade tree policy and the application, and he assured me that he would supplement the application. There was a little bit of confusion about the planning board being notified. And I said, it doesn't have to be coordinated where the planning board can attend necessarily, because that would be kind of corralling a lot of time, but they should at least be notified of the time. That's what the policy said. And he said that he would let us know. But prior to that, I think Chris Leroy had indicated that the arborist was going out this week to look at stuff, but it wasn't confirmed. This is kind of like hearsay behind him. So I'm waiting for that tree policy process to come through as it's supposed to, and that's what I'm requiring. And the DPW is working with us to do that. It was just a little discombobulated at first, because.
So if the arborist is going out, the planning board should be informed?
Yes.
So we can attend if we're available at that time. They don't have to coordinate with us, but.
No, but you should be notified.
We should, yeah.
Yeah, and I let Bill know that.
And I'm a little concerned, because I'm not an arborist, and it's November, and all the trees look dead now.
Right. That's why I think the pictures are so helpful, because they are pictures taken previously with leaves on them and everything. You know, I mean, if you look at, I don't know, I haven't sent you the application yet, because it's not complete. But if you see the packet, it's all colored pictures. And what I could do is probably already email you the list with those pictures, and just let you know it's not the formal application, so you have a chance to look at it. But I'll coordinate, I'll follow up with the, with Chris Leroy and ask him exactly when the arborist is going out there, and reiterate that, you know, the planning board really needs to know a date so that they have the option to go look as well. All right.
Karina, just a quick question. In terms of the photos, are these photos that the residents have submitted? Or Chris went out and checked out their yard and took pictures already, or? How do we know when these photos were taken? Because we, that is one concern, is that sometimes the photos are taken from like the tree reports, the street reports.
Yeah, they could be. So what I see.
Which are very old.
I have to find out, because what I see is when a resident calls in for a request for tree removal, there's a form. And that gets filled out, and then I see pictures added to that. And then in the past, there was a little spreadsheet at the bottom with. And then in the past, there was a little spreadsheet at the bottom with the arborist report, if there was one. So in that whole packet of 32 trees, there was only one that had that little bit of arborist information on it. And that's why I was like, well, we need the rest of these, et cetera. So I'll follow up on what those mean, so we know exactly where those pictures come from. If they're residents or a mix or just the tree warden designated.
So of the 33 trees, only one of them was on a street that had a previous arborist report?
Well, that was on there. For some reason, I just saw this, but when I flipped through, there was a spreadsheet on one of them. And which is, which I think was the one that had an arborist report. That doesn't mean that's the only one that had an arborist report. They may be doing them right now, this week, I don't know. It's, I have to follow up with them, because they started the process in kind of a little bit of a backwards way. And then on October 24th, when the tree policy got accepted, it was crystal clear what the process is. So some of the stuff started happening.
Well, the process was accepted on May.
Yes.
Second.
Yeah. So it wasn't exactly followed, but I'm on their case. Just so you know.
So the reason I'm asking is because the policy requires if there's been a previous arborist report, you know, there've been several, not all streets have had them. But if there is, they should reference that tree identific.
ID number, right.
Yeah, so we know what we're talking about.
That's right, and I indicated that the spreadsheet has to include not only what we used to see in the past with the prior ID, but we need a column that says the tree ID number. There's a column that says the arborist's remarks. And then if there's a tree assessment form, it's supposed to be attached as well. So everything's supposed to be there, you know, and it's itemized right there in the tree policy. So that's what Bill and I went over on Friday. So we were on the same page, so he understood what we were had, what the planning board had written there, because a lot of that text came generated from the planning board, that process. So it was clear.
Karina, do we know when they intend to put these out to bed or to take these trees down? Is there any indication?
No, as soon as possible, but they, you know, originally they wanted to advertise this last week. And we said, well, you can't. So there was a little bit of cart before the horse here. And I think there was just misunderstanding as to the process. But like I said, when I met with Bill on Friday, we went through the line items right there on the tree policy. We printed it up and said, this needs to be on here, this, this needs to happen and this needs to happen. So that's where, this application is not complete. I'm waiting it to be complete, I will get some feedback. The one thing I need is the tree assessment report, form.
So, so to take off on Lisa's question. Are they planning on taking these trees down this winter?
I don't know that. I think that they try to get as many down as they can, when they can, but I'll check on that.
Because they pushed back against, that's why that was changed, because the DPW superintendent said they didn't like taking trees down in the winter.
So maybe they're not, I can't.
So if they're taking them down next spring, then maybe we can have hearings after trees are leafed out. So we can get a true assessment of what trees look like. Because as I said, right now, nothing has leaves and leaves.
Yeah, when? Plan two. Okay, remove. Yeah, this all came kind of suddenly at the end of last week that we were trying to like wrangle it in. And the process was a little bit, like I said, cart before the horse. So we're straightening that out and, but this is good input, because I can find this stuff out.
So was the 27th actually realistic? I mean, it seems we're rushing this process through and that's where we've run into problems in the past.
Yeah.
So I'm not necessarily against putting the brakes on and saying, we're not going to post it for the 27th. We want to walk, we want to do all these things, we want to see the pictures. I mean, that's my two cents. It just, this feels like, from what I'm hearing tonight, this whole process is being rushed to get this done.
Yeah, and I think that, I think that my suggestion would be the planning board doesn't pick or want to accommodate a date until the application's actually in and complete. Right. You know, because we're, again, that's part of the rush, you know what I mean? And I think it's just a slight miscalculation and misunderstanding of a sudden pressure. So we'll just take it one step at a time and follow the proper process. Because we file it with the town clerk, the scenic road tree removal application. And we don't do that until it's complete, until the steps have been done. So. That one's under control, so far. We're just in the midst of controlling it, okay, we'll take care of that.
So if that gets postponed, we'll have to keep that unauthorized scenic tree removal. Keep that in the forefront. If the, if this hearing, I was thinking we could put that on that hearing agenda, but if that doesn't happen.
Right.
We don't want to forget about that.
No.
Okay.
I'll, I'll follow up with Bill again to make sure it's very clear where the planning board wants, needs this to go as required by the process that we, that you worked on so hard to get in place. Okay. The next planner's report is the St. Mark's Stonewall and Tree Mitigation. So the project went out to bid a second time. And town administrator informed me that the ad alt for the stone wall was accepted as part of the bid. So the stone wall is in the project.
So is the select board going to respond to our letter in writing? So in our letter, we, we requested a response in writing to how that mitigation has been accomplished.
So I can request via email response to that.
Okay.
And we had talked about it, but we were going to just discuss it here.
Okay.
Under the planner's report to confirm that I'm going to send an email to Mark and the select board chair requesting a response in writing on the mitigation.
So that would be, that would be my suggestion, unless someone else on the board does not want to do that. Okay.
Okay, so email to Mark Purple and Select Board Chair. Response to letter in writing to planning board. Okay, can do that. We already discussed the tree removal application. The last thing is, it's budget time for fiscal year '25, so I have a draft budget that I've started working on. It's due on October 22nd, unless we need a little more time. October 22nd? I mean, November 22nd, I'm sorry. I'm a little fried. So I was hoping the planning board would designate a member to work with me in the past, like Dawn did. So either Mimi or whoever you choose to work with me to finalize it. What I do is I bring it up to date, add any projects that we need, make any minor changes, adjust the salaries based on the SAP feedback. And then we have one, and then the planning board member who works with me reviews it and signs off on it. And we can already get it submitted. And then we, if we have time and there's another meeting before, we bring it before the board for any comments. But we can do that without everybody responding at once. Like you can each give me your comments if you have them.
As long as I've been on the board, it's been the chair.
Except for last year when Marnie did it. But I'd be happy to, and I know Marnie's taken a lot on tonight.
And it's basically for review and feedback.
It was only because of the ARPA funds that I, that I, I was very interested in securing funding for certain initiatives.
Yeah. But, you know, it's, of course, it's open to anyone's, we just have to get it to a point, and so I'll take it to that.
No, I'd be happy to, unless somebody else.
And then I pass it by, we just discuss it briefly, because it's, it doesn't change that much. A lot of things don't change, but there might be some new initiatives to think of and.
So the budget that's in the Dropbox is not.
That's the original one that we get that we have to work up.
Okay.
All right, and so I took that and I already started working on it, but I didn't want to confuse everything and stick it in the middle.
Okay, all right.
I'm going to take it to a point where it's like 98%. And then we'll sit down and look at it and make any last changes and then we'll distribute, I'll distribute it for any lingering comments. But my goal is to get it in before the deadline, at least a draft. Because they do change, because there's negotiations and such sometimes on where we can have a percentage increase for the year, so we don't impact the tax rate. So we can do, we can plan something for the end of the week or the beginning of next week. I'll have something in shape. Okay, and then that's it for the planner's report. Again, the open space monitoring report for fiscal year '23 is going to be on the December 11th agenda. I provided that report to Freddie Gillespie, Open Space Preservation Commission, so they have a chance to look at it. And it'll be Joe Orzel, he'll be presenting virtually as he's in New Hampshire. So he'll run through the report relatively briefly and if there's any questions. If anybody needs a copy of that, let me know. I'll let you know where it is in the Dropbox. Take a look at it, it's the same format that you're used to. And then lastly, as far as ARPA funds, we've been using ARPA funds for the MBTA communities regularly for materials we need and printing and mailing. I'm still looking for a consultant to do the deed research database update. So again, if you have any suggestions, I'm going to talk to Freddie some more about that, she may have some. And then Mass Autobahn, I think, had given me a referral to somebody, so I have some leads, but, you know, we'll get on that as well. And then we just have two sets of, maybe three sets of meeting, two sets of meeting minutes for tonight.
I'll make a motion, the planning board approved the October 2nd, 2023 minutes as written.
Second. For discussion. I have a couple things. Line 99. Residents at Park Central 40B had filed a comprehensive permit, I would say, ad application with the zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
Line 131. Stone stone wall be used in construction of the new wall, that the language on the plans regarding stones, it was the language in the bid?
In the bid?
And then line 156. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 48, it's actually Chapter 41, Section 81i.
Chapter forty?
One.
One, section.
81i.
81i, yes.
That's all I got.
Okay, with changes.
Anything else?
Okay.
So except as amended?
So moved.
Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes? Oh, I was just. For, I believe I was. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, I'll change my vote to abstain.
Just so you know, you, I think you can vote if you choose to, but you don't have to.
I'll abstain.
Sorry, didn't mean to question you, Jessie. Uh, Houlihan, yes?
Demuriya, yes.
Brashio, yes.
And I was present for part of that meeting, I believe, yeah. It's October 11th, so I'll make the motion that the planning board accept the minutes from the October 11th, 2023 meeting as written.
Second.
For discussion. I have one, line 92. It says, Mr. Paul Deprano's to Bantry Road and in a butter. I would check that, because he's the, he's the ZBA member that has recused himself. And I don't think he lives on Bantry, so I don't think that's the correct name.
It's either the name or the address.
It's the, whoever lives at Two Bantry, I don't think is Mr. Paul Deprano.
But Two Bantry is correct.
I don't, he didn't spoke, he didn't speak, no, he wasn't there, he's recused himself.
It's Howard.
Oh, Howard Rose?
Rose.
Oh, okay.
Not Mr. Deprano, that's right. So the address was correct, but the person was wrong.
And they may have referred to, so then on line 94, it refers to Mr. Deprano, so it should be Rose.
Got it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I was definitely absent for this whole thing, so I'll abstain.
Okay, as amended?
So moved?
Second.
No more comments, seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
I abstain.
Houlihan, yes?
Demuriya, yes.
Brashio, yes.
So who motioned and who seconded? Jessie, did you motion? You can motion, right?
I did make the initial motion and then Marnie made the motion to amend the minutes. That was seconded by Deborah Maria.
Okay. We got it.
Or Lisa, Lisa Brashio.
Seconded by Lisa, okay. It's just so that Bridget, our recording clerk, it's clear. Okay.
So we have another mapping session Wednesday night for MBTA communities. I invite everybody to attend at the senior center at 6:30.
All set?
All set?
Yes, I think we're good.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a discussion, seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demuriya, yes.
Brashio, yes.
And it's eight twenty-two.